Okay. It's six o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to open the meeting. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Nathan, good?
Yes.
All set. Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Fall River at 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 20th, 2019. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the open meeting law pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier. The lady to my left is recording an audio version and Fall River Government TV, Nathan Saucier, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Hearing none, present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, James Corkins, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, Vice Chair of the Zoning Board, and alternate members Dan Dupere and David Sager. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Rock, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 as amended.
Yes.
I declare the June 20th, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the city of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the zoning board of appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the city of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon your title, to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after the decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the city of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The newly adopted city charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. A sign-in sheet is on the table in the back of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. We will listen to agenda item number two first since Attorney Salino has disclosed that he and his wife are the keynote speakers for the FLY Foundation, which stands for the Financial Lift for Young Adults with Cancer, and he's expected to be present at 6:00 PM. And he's already passed the hours, so are there any questions before we begin?
Thank you.
Let's start with agenda item number two. Agenda item number two, Michael Kudo, 555 Broadway, Lot G2121. It's a special permit request to convert the existing two-family dwelling into three-family, previously approved and acted on in March 2018, but has not been recorded. It's an R4 district, lot size 4,557, plus or minus square feet. Attorney Salino.
Yes, good evening. For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I maintain a law office at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River. I would like to thank the board for the courtesy of allowing me to go first. If this petition sounds familiar to you, it is because it is. It was brought before you on March 15th, as the chairman just alluded to, of last year. The petition is seeking to increase a nonconformity on a pre-existing structure to make a two-family a three-family. The petitioner worked in good faith towards the relief sought in the petition, pulled permits, did the work, et cetera, and when he went to have it inspected, he was asked to see the recorded special permit decision. And through error and inadvertence, it was not recorded. So the relief sought is detailed in the petition and is exactly the same as what I asked for last year, seeking again to make a two-family into a three-family. I submitted to you in my paperwork that I don't think this is detrimental to the neighborhood. There are multiple or many three-families surrounding there, and he's also created off-street parking and used the garage for that purpose as well.
The work has already been done?
The work is done.
In conformity with the special permit that is granted?
Correct.
So it's ready to be a three-family, be inspected as a three-family?
That is correct. And the proclusion?
The only thing is the decision needs to get recorded.
That is correct.
And then the building department will be happy.
That is correct, yep.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions on this petition? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Is he ready for the inspection? Do we need to grant a two-year maximum special permit?
No, you're ready.
I'm ready.
Yeah, he is ready.
Okay. Okay, members of the board, could I motion to grant?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant. Dan Dupere, do I have a second?
Second.
Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, petition is granted, special permit, one year. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.
So we'll stop now with agenda item number one. Agelen's Cousin LLC, 100 Weaver Street, Lot T315. This is a combination special permit request for 192 units, six-story, age-restricted senior 55 and older residential building and commercial mill district, and also a variance request to demolish the existing structure and build an age-restricted senior 55 and older six-story multifamily dwelling, waving pocket, side rear setback requirements, lot size 2.09 plus or minus acres. Good evening. You identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at Sitech Engineering with offices in the city as well as Dartmouth, Massachusetts. And also here this evening is the president of Sitech Environmental, who runs the Marshfield office, Al Frachemis, who's here as well. We also have the property owner as well as the site architect. So if any number of questions come up that I can't answer for you, we'll have one of them hop in and straighten everything out. So as the chairman stated, the proposal before you is located at 100 Weaver Street, which you're all somewhat familiar with. As you pull down off of North Main, down onto Weaver, you get past the first apartment complex on your right-hand side, five-story brick building, 107 units. That was a converted mill structure. As you continue down Weaver, on the north side, you'll come across what's called Hard Pine Trust Company. It's a very large steel commercial building with associated parking. The entire lot is approximately two acres. It is zoned commercial mill district, and I think about 82% of the existing lot is currently impervious surface. So the petition before you is requesting a number of things. The project in general, as you see on the board that I have up here that I've just colored for you, we would be raising the existing structure, which is located in this area. The rest of this area is paved parking area. What you see shaded in yellow in this kind of an H and an opened-up Y at the top of it is the proposed structure, and that would contain 192 units. The unit breakdown for that would be 172 one-bedroom units and 22-two-bedroom units. And the architect can explain a little bit about the concept of why the building is designed in this manner. It's a beautiful building, and we'll show you some renderings of it in a couple of minutes. So the petition before you does require some relief. We met with members of the planning staff, engineering, utilities, fire, building department prior to putting together the application. We've, what I believe, addressed many of their concerns and have put together the petition. What I can offer to you is that we'll read through the list of different types of relief that are required. With specific regards to the building itself, we are requesting side yard relief from the 10-foot minimum side yard requirement and rear yard requirement, as you can see shown on the plan. We would be asking for at one location, a setback of 7.4 feet, and on the east side of the property, and then on the north side, 6.7 feet. You'll see that top left corner where that yellow structure gets a little bit closer, and then again to the right-hand side as well. Those are the two areas where building setback relief is 100% required through the issuance of a variance. The remaining relief that we're requesting is, first, in a commercial mill district, this type of use, a residential multifamily use, is allowed by special permit. Doesn't have to be a bifurcated hearing, it's just a matter of whether or not you feel the proposal fits the neighborhood and would be in keeping with what the surrounding area is. So that's the largest piece of this with regards to your jobs as asserting the zoning bylaw of the city of Fall River. Parking, we are asking for-
You know, let me stop you about the bifurcated hearing.
Yep.
I think we have to have these findings under-
This is what happened on Rodman Street identically. Remember when we came back?
Go ahead. But I think because this is the multi-use, under 48, Section 9, the third paragraph-
But the zoning table itself-
No, the zoning table says special permit.
Required by special permit.
But I just, because in preparing for the meeting this evening, I wanted to bring it to somebody's attention that I think that we need to just have, first, we need to have that determination, and then under section 119-
I thought-
So third paragraph of Section 9, zoning ordinance or bylaws may provide, the special permits may be granted for multifamily residential use in non-residential zoned areas where public good would be served and after a finding by special permit granting authority that such non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by such a residence use, and that permitted use in such a zone are not noxious to a multifamily use, as distinguished from Rodman, where Rodman was zoned, you could have had that use.
No.
Not special permit. It wasn't a commercial mill district.
No, that was special permit.
Yes, this is special permit also.
Exactly, and-
But this is in a commercial mill district. The other one was not in a commercial mill district.
No, it wasn't, yeah. That's in the industrial district too down there, or BL, whatever it was, but it was, it wasn't, it's not an allowed use. But in any event, if you want to go through the bifurcated hearing process-
No, no, I just-
But in the past, we made the determination, or it was determined that we didn't.
They didn't have to go forward, go ahead.
So, correct me, so I guess we will go forward with the bifurcated portion of the hearing.
I just, yeah.
For that first portion of it anyway. With regards to parking relief, we are asking for a reduction in the overall parking required for the project. On the plan that you see provided there-
How much of a reduction?
Under the zoning bylaw, under the parking requirements, 192 units would require two spaces per. We are proposing 237 parking spaces. That comes out to be 1.23 units per. And when you look at the bedroom count, it comes down to 1.1 spaces per bedroom. Now, again, in 86-445, the zoning bylaw allows these types of reductions. All of the parking relief that we're seeking this evening can be handled as a special permit. However, with meeting with the building inspector, he felt that to cover ourselves, that we should file them technically as a variance. But I do believe the board would have the ability to move forward acting on them as a special permit if they saw fit. And when you read 86-445, you'll see that there is a provision that allows this reduction based upon four or five different factors, one of them being age-related. Now, these will be 55 and over apartment units, and normally in a development like this, reductions in parking are allowed to some extent. So we would request that we move forward through that section and that the board has the ability to grant that waiver for the total number of spaces if they saw fit. Some of the other parking, whether they're waivers by special permit or by variance, are mostly due with minimum setbacks to property lines for screened buffer areas. There is a minimum of five feet required. We do have a couple of sections where we are three feet at one location, 4.7 in another, seven feet when it abuts. A residential use, 10 feet is required, so we're only asking for seven of that. The front yard setback should be 10 feet to the parking. We're asking to create a four-foot buffer strip rather than the 10 as well. Also, with interior landscaping, when you exceed a certain number of parking spaces, you're supposed to provide a certain percentage of green space landscaped area within the lot itself, and so we're asking for a waiver with regards to that as well. I think what's important to understand is that we're dealing with a parcel that is pretty much predominantly an existing structure and existing asphalt with almost no green space. And this proposal actually reduces the overall impervious area, I think by about 4% from what's currently on the site now, which I think is something like 82 to 78. But it is definitely a reduction in overall impervious surface. Again, we've met with fire, all of the different city departments with regards to utilities. They've asked us to add some hydrant locations. They've reviewed the accessibility requirements for getting the fire apparatus through the building, although you don't see it necessarily on a flat picture, and I was just getting to that point. What you see shaded there, the majority of the parking is under the building. So ground level will be parking garage at the ground level of the building. And you would actually drive through the building. The site is accessed by two driveways, one to the east, one to the west. There would be an initial parking area along Weaver Street itself, and if you were to come in this easterly driveway, you actually would pull in here, and this is all underground garage spaces that you could continue now outside to access this exterior parking facility. And you could also drive straight through to access this exterior. So what we've done is we've taken what would have been a massive parking area and broken it up into one, two, three, four exterior pods, and have masked the majority of the parking spaces underneath the building itself. Now, this type of building in this location, we are afforded a height requirement of 80 feet or six stories, which we're good with that. The building inspector's looked at the proposals that we've submitted and building renderings, and he feels that we've met those requirements, so that's not relief that we need. So in general, the relief that we're seeking, the majority of it can be handled as a special permit. The building setback relief, however, does require a variance. And the reasoning behind and the requirements for having or requesting this building setback relief has to do with the building design itself and what was trying to be accomplished on the site. Now, those are some architectural questions that if you have questions about Steve Devine, who is the site architect, can answer some of those. But what the general proposal or what the mindset was, was to create as many units with as many exterior views as possible, rather than creating one square of a building consolidated into the middle of the site. We've wanted to create, you know, as many angles, that's why we've got the angles, and as many exterior spots that every unit would have some potential views of the Taunton River, or at least to the exterior of the building, not to an interior portion. So if you have any concerns or questions regarding the building layout, Steve's probably more apt to answer those questions.
Let me ask about parking.
Sure.
If you're using, my kind of similar, 1.2 is what I was coming up with. If we went by 1.5, is not additional space to get it to one and a half per unit?
If we were to go to one and a half spaces per unit, we would have to have a reduction in overall units. That would bring us-
You'd have to reduce the units.
We would have to, yeah. Other than adding an additional deck of parking-
I'm not looking to get rid of landscaped area, but if you-
Right.
If you went into the, even with all that-
Yeah, no, if we could have added more parking, we would have. But no, I mean, and we have discussed that, and it's a delicate balance, but to get additional spaces would require an additional deck of parking, which would require us to then seek a relief for the building height to expand it an additional floor. But I think probably the best thing to do is, and just because it's such a great-looking building, I'd like to have Steve at least present to you the architectural drawings that he's brought, just so that you can get a feel for the investment and the type of structure that we're proposing at the site, and that the audience can see that as well. So Steve, if you could.
Hi, Steve, where are you?
What's that?
I said, Steve, where are you?
Yeah. Just if you want, just give him a little rundown of the building itself, and then that'll give him some time to think of some questions or stuff that they may want to hear. A lot of the topics have been covered. What I'll try to do is touch upon the thought behind planning this building. As was mentioned, we envision this as a senior housing project. We work in many towns across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and many projects, and I can tell you that any place we go, there's a backlog looking for this kind of project, elderly housing. No one seems to be building it. So that's what we're focused on, and predominantly, as mentioned, one-bedroom units. And in planning this site, it's all about the cars. How many cars can you get, and what is that ratio? And I know we're talking about 1.25, 1.5. From all the projects we're doing of this type, we're seeing that ratio go down. Of course, the transportation-oriented projects, we're seeing it go way down. So it wouldn't be unheard to see this at one space, one space per unit, or I've even seen 0.9. When we were planning this, we felt that 1.25 was pretty reasonable, considering that most of these are one-bedroom units and it's elderly. So is every person going to have a car? Probably not. People going to have two cars, very unlikely. If they were two-bedroom units, you know, perhaps, but... So we felt that the 1.25, I think 1.23, whatever that is, was very reasonable. The basic planning of the building was set up so that we could optimize how many cars we could get. So typically what we do is we'll plan parking at grade with stilts. So this is all at grade. And then we have to build a basement, or at least take the foundation down. So what we commonly will do is try to plan what we call parking in the basement. Okay, it's as simple as that. So this ramp goes down to the basement. This one goes up a little bit because one of the tricks that you have to manage here is where's the water table? We don't want to be building in the water table. So we did a little detective work. We found out the water table is about eight feet down. So we're actually elevating the first floor up three feet so we can get parking in the basement under the footprint of the building, which does disguise many of the cars. The other thing what we wanted to do is we wanted to try to get a little bit of a view of the Taunton River. It's right there. And so that kind of shaped our thinking about splaying this off and making it kind of interesting. The building has actually been planned to be built as one building or two different phases, depending on, you know, what the economy would be when the project would go forward. So this has been designed to be built as one with a lobby, and then this could be tacked on later, or preferably built all as one project. This parking is access coming through the building. We've got this parking at grade in the back. There's some incidental parking here and some incidental parking here. So it is broken up quite nicely.
Steve, let me stop you for a minute.
Go ahead.
Is the ratio the same, 81 and 81?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one units on one side, eighty-one on the other side with the same 10, two bedrooms?
I think so, yeah. And then there's some in the middle.
And there's some in the-
Yeah. The basic planning concept was to have a visitor parking drop-off in the front, maybe with a bus shelter if you've got a bus line going in there at some point. I mean, we were thinking that this whole area might want to kind of go elderly housing at some point. So if that were to occur, we made provisions for a bus shelter if that gets developed. We have a nice entrance courtyard with a gate. You come into this lobby, which is pretty open, and you might capture a little bit of a view through here. It's an entrance lobby, it's got elevators, stairs, you've got a manager, some incidental toilets, mail, the types of things you would see in a lobby. Two elevators and stairways. So that's pretty much the enclosed space in the first floor level. Otherwise, it's all public parking. Going up, actually going down, this is parking in the basement. So as I mentioned, you're coming down, you're into the basement now. That's what this is. And downstairs, we would have some utility, sprinkle electric, fill a phone, such like that. Two elevators. Going up a level, you see all the units in here.
Excuse me, two elevators, one on each side?
Correct.
Not two on, not a total four, one on each-
So if they decide to split it, there's conveniently one elevator on each side. The middle is, on the second floor, we have a residence meeting room with a nice outdoor terrace, some bathrooms and a kitchen, so if they want to have a tenants' meeting, they can easily be accommodated. We're envisioning this as apartments, so under the laws governing that, you have to have a certain percent that are handicap. We've made provisions for those. And as you go up, it's the basic plan. We've got more units in the middle on the upper levels. And then when you get to the roof deck, there's such a great view there, we made this an opportunity for a roof deck where, you know, something could occur there. We also have some provisions for some tenant storage. The units are what we would call modest, 600 square feet. So you've got a one-bedroom, a nice living dining area, a kitchen area, and what we call a Hollywood bath. So if somebody comes in, you can get in this way, or you can go directly from the bedroom. We have what we call Juliet balconies. So they're not step-out balconies, but they're nice. You open up the French doors and you feel like you're outside. There's a railing across. They're very effective. So predominantly, that's what we have. There are some two-bedrooms, and, you know, it's a little bit different arrangement. Those are typically on the corners. Those are 942 square feet. And then I have some pictures. So, you know, down in that area, it's all mills. That's what you've got. And in trying to come up with a building that we thought would be appropriate to fit that area, we tried to not design a mill necessarily, but we tried to come up with an architectural style that we thought would fit in nicely. So what you have here, this is the view from this front Weaver Road, and we've got a nice, you know, landscape courtyard with wrought iron, some piers, nice arch that you would enter in to the lobby, and then you would go up and get into the two wings. And of course, they all have these towers down there, so we thought that would be a nice touch to add those in. And then the building splays off. In the back-
The towers don't exceed the height restriction, do they?
They're mechanical. So we envision those would be cooling towers.
The building inspector will comment.
Mechanical comment?
No, no, my only question is, you're proposing that, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure your-
That we don't need height.
Your aesthetics, you're not going, you don't need a waiver of height to get those there?
I'll be this guy.
Yeah. No, the building inspector has reviewed the building plans. We do have the 80-foot allowance.
That's what I'm only concerned with.
Yeah, the building's only six foot.
Yes, do it, and then you're coming back because you-
We would not be exceeding the 80-foot height requirement.
Good answer.
Please, go on.
So the back, you can see it's got the nice deck. It's a two-deck system. And then, you know, up top.
Steve, the entrance and exit of the parking, are they out of the same entrance and exit coming out of the same tube? The one on the right, the one on the left? No, just as the cars come in, traffic flow?
I gotta look at the plan.
It's two lanes. This isn't one-way in and one-way out.
No, 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 it's two lanes.
So each driveway has two lanes.
Same entrance, one-
And you can get from one to the other, yes.
Two lanes on each side, yes, correct.
That was my question when we were going to have.
Yeah, and they're interconnected. So you could go in one and entirely out the other. I'll go back out the one that you just came in.
So these are the other elevations. We've drawn them all. The building is 69 foot 11. We work on a lot of these projects, and once you get over 70 feet, it triggers the high-rise construction and the building code, so a lot of buildings are 69 foot 11. You can see down the bottom of the base, that's where the parking with stilts is. We envision wrought iron railing. You've got a lot of brick down that area, so that's what we proposed. And we think it fits into the area nicely. You see this kind of pitch roof all over the place down there, so we try to do something along those lines. Questions? That's an overview. I can talk about this all night.
No, no, I know. You've got your 15 minutes of fame. You've got your 15 minutes of fame now, giving the presentation.
He doesn't get down here often, so let him have it.
No, but that's good. So, he did his own marketing, and, you know, we dealt initially with the issues for the land use and the zoning board. Okay. Any questions, members of the board? Anything on the side? Jim? I think if we're going to deal, if we're going to deal with the reduction in parking, I think we should, my opinion is, we should probably do it under 86-445, the special permit, rather than granting the variance on it, because that language gives us lots of leeway, especially because of age or other characteristics and the way this thing is designed versus the variance that I think the standard would be a little bit hotter to meet. But let me see if anybody's in favor or opposed to the petition before we go further. Is anyone in favor of this petition?
Yeah.
Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Okay? Before we go, before we go any further, I want to ask the director of planning if he has any input.
Yeah, I just have a question too. Seven visitor parking spaces on one side.
Yes.
What about staff or, you know, workers?
Well, what happens is, in the parking ratios that are required or that we use, that ratio number, that factors in that not everyone has a car, or that not everyone in a two-bedroom has the two. So, it's just, it's a general average per unit. It just happens to be one or two, which you would think in your head that that's what everyone would have. But over time, in all the different studies that they've had, a lot of multifamily buildings that we deal with are in this ratio of the one point, around the 1.25. But what's very important...
If they assign parking spaces to the each unit, then it doesn't really give you a visitor response outside of these designated ones.
That's correct. So, I'm not sure if they would be designated spaces. I don't know if anybody has looked into that, but it would be my guess that there would not be at this point. But what we can do is, and the reason why I gave the number when we first started, is normally when we deal with these multifamilies, there's a mix of ones, two units, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. And that really kind of creates havoc on our average number and our parking ratios. So, it's important to look at the bedroom count of this building, which we exceed one space per bedroom. So, even in the twos, if we've got, you know, two gentlemen that are renting together, they'll each have technically a spot. Or if you have, sometimes you'll have a one that'll have no car. Sometimes you'll have a one that'll have two cars, if it's a husband and a wife. But those are generally the industry ratio averages that we've tried to comply with.
How many people, how many employees do we expect on-site, on average, to make...
I'm guessing probably not more than three.
Couple.
Yeah, two to three. And on a given shift, you figure one maintenance, maybe one at the manager's office during certain hours of the day, but that's probably it.
Okay. Okay.
What's nice about the buildings too, as Steve stated, is that they've created these community rooms on one level, the enclosed community room, and then also the two different decks as well. So, people always say, "Well, what happens if you're having, you know, people over or anything else?" They have the ability to have whatever, a birthday party, or a luncheon, or a politician comes in to speak. They've got these rooms and facilities to use as well.
Okay. Jim, anything else? Director of planning, what if any comments, should we think about that maybe we're missing or we're not?
Well, I had had some questions for the applicant, which he actually added. I'm like, "What is the bedroom count?", because that's really key to this. If you look at our code...
So, we agree it's 172, one-bedroom and 20...
Yes, and actually, I have a code compliance plan that I was given. I don't know if it was actually submitted as part of the application, but I can give you a copy of it to make it part of the application. I'm just going to find it.
Well, I think if it gets granted, I think the numbers that you've used are going to be included.
Yes. Those were the numbers that were presented to me for unit breakdown, yes.
Because if you look at our code, you know, we look at multifamily unit, which we average out to be two bedrooms, two per unit. So, I can, I don't have an issue with the logic on the 212 bedrooms, and if you had a bedroom for every, if you had a car for every single bedroom, that's 212 spaces, and then that would be 35 spaces for visitors and ancillary. They didn't break it out that way. I just wanted it for the board, I wanted to break it out that this project would, if you gave a car at every bedroom, it's 212 spaces. So, let's say they assigned it, there would be 35 spaces for the...
Visitors and...
As far as the building and the use itself, we, when the planning department feel that bringing this type of development in would be, we would encourage it, and I think that it's, would be an asset. It's just whether the board feels that, due to the circumstance of the significant number of one-bedroom units, if the parking is sufficient.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah. So, on the whole, I feel it's, I feel it's a very nicely designed project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, is anyone in favor? Is anyone opposed? I've got no opposition. No one was in favor. But if we're going to go forward, I think we need those two components. So, the first one being, let me read it out, so maybe Brittany, I'm sure she's doing the minutes. So, the first part, if we're, if we're thinking about it, then under 48, section nine, even our zoning ordinance provides that a special permit may be granted for multifamily residential use in non-residentially zoned areas where the public good would be served, and after a finding by the special permit granting authority, which is us, that such non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by such a residential use, and that permitted uses in such a zone are not not just to a multifamily use. So, you can copy it on this. So, if that's something that someone wanted to say, let's make a finding that that, so we take care of that one. So, Jim Clarkins?
Mr. Chairman, I find that, or I move that we find that the allowance of the building in a commercial district will not be detrimental to the use of that area.
And not not just to the multifamily use.
Not not just.
Okay. So, that's step one. I have motion by Jim Clarkins that 48, section, 48, section nine, third paragraph is met. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? David, yes? Okay. So, that piece is done. On the other part, the special permit part, any parking or loading requirements set forth herein may be reduced or modified upon the issuance of a special permit by the zoning board of appeals if the board finds that the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit. Such cases might include age or other characteristics of occupants of the facility requiring parking, which reduces order usage, peculiarities of the use, which make usual measures of demand invalid, and use of common parking lot for separate uses, having peak demands occurring at different times. So, that's under our ordinance, section 86-445. So, we can, if we make that determination, that it's not inconsistent with public health and safety, and that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit, and because of the age restriction, maybe that meets it. So, if you want to...
So...
All right, so, Clarkins makes a special permit, we have that finding that they've 86-445. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion on the parking reduction? All those in favor? Okay, so we take care of that. In terms of the variance part of it, the variance that's being asked, the specific items are side yard...
Would be a side yard of 6.4, sorry, 6.7 feet on the north, which runs along the...
Is that the amount of variance?
That's the setback. 10 feet is the requirement. We're proposing 6.7 to the north, and that would be along the Westerly Expressway.
So, that would be a variance of 3.3?
Correct.
On that, and what was the other one? And that was the one on the Western Expressway?
7.4, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
7.4 to the Eastalley of Butter, in lieu of the required 10.
Four, six, okay. All right, so that's a 2.6 waiver there.
That's correct.
Is that correct? The 3.3 was on the north, and the 2.6 was on the east.
Correct.
What else? What other waiver did you need?
Those were the only actual variances that we needed with regards to buildings.
I think it's different. I'm just looking at my own. I don't know, my eyes were bad.
So, if it's 10, we've got 6.7, the difference is 3.3, right?
Fifteen, sixteen.
I've got, I've got 6.7 to the north.
Six foot 10 and three-quarter. Yes, they already get off of it. I've got 6.7 to the north. That's, again? This says six foot 10 and three-quarter, but six foot seven is better. Correct. And then, on this one, we had, on our plan, seven foot four. Yeah, we need a little more, seven foot six, a little bit, two inches. No, no, no. We're, I'm asking seven-four.
I'm giving, I'm giving, Steve, I'm giving you the difference. He's looking this, and I'm saying if it's 10 feet, then you only need a waiver of 2.6 or 2.4. So, take the 2.6.
His plan shows a setback of 7, 7.5. So, why don't we say seven? Just...
That's fine, that's fine.
Let's say seven.
I think I have some hands in my...
I can give you three.
Or to make it simple...
Six or seven.
You want to do that? That'd be fine. In case, in case somebody digs a hole in a real place.
Look how wide is the line? Yes, so...
So, four and three, I got that.
Correct. So, we round it up, four and three, so that will work. And we don't need a variance for the height, so that's okay.
No, that's correct.
And those are the only variances you need.
That is correct.
So, when the decision comes, it's going to be, the condition will be a 55 and older community.
Yes, yeah. The unit breakdown that you have, that I submitted?
And the unit's going to be, and the unit breakdown is 172, one-bedroom, 22-bedrooms.
Yes, and you can put that, you can have that planned for the record that I submitted.
And this plan that you submitted with the parking, that's going to...
Well, that has the unit breakdown as well.
No, that's going to be the unit breakdown and the numbers.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, yep.
So, these dimensions you guys are sorting out, that's normally referred to as the distance between the property line and the face of the building, correct?
Correct.
So, if I have to have a footing underground, I'm not going to have a problem with these issues?
No.
Subbacks? Okay. Thank you.
No. So, those are the variances that you're requesting? So, now, we have the board forget a motion to grant the variance, for those are the only waivers that they're looking for variance-wise. Can I get a motion that says we want to grant a variance based on specific, I guess, the shape and the topography of this particular building, or this site, and the only variances that they need are the six, strike that, the four and the three?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the set deck variances as we requested of four feet on the north and three feet on the east.
Okay. Okay, and we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so now, together, the special permit...
Give us two years.
Special, if we grant the special permit, I would recommend that it be for two years, because we don't want them coming back. But the variance can only be for one year, but if they don't do stuff within the year, they have to come back, maximum for a six-month extension. So, special permit, two years, if somebody's...
Do we need to ask about the buffer screen?
Grant the special permit?
No, that's all...
Motion to grant the special permit? Want to do it two, two phases? Do we want to grant the special permit?
I move that we grant a special permit for two years and a variance for the one-year period.
Okay. So, we have that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. So, that project, this project is granted with those conditions, special permit for two years, variance for one year, and it was on those specific items that were brought before the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple more. I wish, I wish I was done.
Agenda item number three. Are we ready for number three?
Yes.
Vasco T. Cabral, 662 Slade Street Lot B1329, a variance request to subdivide the parcel, leaving the existing three-family dwelling on one lot on lot number one, while demolishing existing garage and constructing a new single-family dwelling on lot two, waiving requirements in the BL district, lot size 11,950.
You're struggling as bad as I am. I can't see today. I don't know what it is.
Sunspots.
Good evening again. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Vasco Cabral, who owns the real estate at 662 Slade Street. This property is just west of South Main Street, as you're heading down the hill of Slade. It's across the street from the medical office building, which I believe is part of St. Anne's, but I'm not sure, and directly adjacent to another very long retail commercial use that had been a carpet flooring facility at one point. I'm not sure what it is now. So, we are in a BL district, which clearly understands why we have the commercial uses across the street and to the east. And we do also have some existing one-family, multifamilies, and two families across the street, and a six diagonally across. So, in this BL district, the area requirement is 5,000 square feet for the first unit, 1,500 square feet for the next unit. This parcel sits on the corner of Slade in Wilcox, as you can see, and Wilcox Street actually sits from the Eastalley side of the property where the home is, down to Wilcox Street, there's probably a 10 to 12-foot elevation difference. Now, along that Wilcox Street frontage, if you see on the plan shaded underneath, is an existing garage structure that fronts right up against the Wilcox Street sidewalk. It has a number of doors and a very large curb cut along Wilcox Street. So, the petition before you is to create parcel two, which would be 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage. That meets the requirements.
You've got two parcel twos.
Could we give one of the two labels?
Do I?
Just so we make sure we're consistent in our...
I was waiting to pump some of that.
Parcel two would be the new home, which would be, have frontage on Wilcox.
Which would be on the north, and parcel one's going to be the existing three-family.
Correct. I apologize for that. Cut and paste is a wonderful thing. So, parcel two would be a perfectly conforming lot, although odd-shaped, it would have 50 feet of frontage, 5,000 square feet in area, and we would be building a single-family home that would meet the building setback requirements for the district. So, zero relief would be required for the proposed single-family, and that would have frontage on Wilcox. The parcel on Slade Street, parcel one, would have its same frontage that it currently has, 100 feet on Slade, and additional 65 wrapping around the corner of Wilcox. This parcel, however, is where the relief comes in. This parcel would normally be required to have 8,000 square feet in area for the 5,000 and then 1,500 for each unit. So, we are asking for a reduction of 1050, 1,050 square feet in overall area, and a rear yard setback, and that's the smallest one, of four feet to the existing deck. Those would be the two sections of relief that we would be...
I'm sorry, can somebody shut the door up there?
Buck, can you either tell them to move if you don't mind, or close the door, so we don't listen to that? Thank you.
So the sections of relief that we would be asking for have to do with Parcel 1 and this existing 3-family dwelling. We would have a rear yard setback variance, and then a side yard setback variance to that little jog, but technically that would be a rear. So at its closest point, the deck and home would be no closer than 4 feet to the new property line. As part of the petition, off-street parking would be proposed and would be required on the Wilcox Street home. And then we would have to construct a new parking facility directly west of the existing 3-family that we could accommodate 6 spaces. There is currently an additional curb cut to the easterly side of the existing 3-family dwelling that we would request remain, however, if the City Council would not grant us an additional curb cut, then we would remove that existing driveway. It's not shown, about... Right now, there's a driveway there. Yeah, there's a driveway that comes in here now, that does this. And that's where they actually park for this home. This garage with all the doors here, I believe is actually rented to other people in the neighborhood.
That garage is going to, the current garage...
That car garage is getting removed, and the new home is actually smaller in footprint than the garage that we're actually removing.
On Slade Street, you're proposing another curb cut of 16 feet.
That's correct. Well, I'm proposing this new parking area for 6 spaces, because we couldn't put 6 on the existing driveway.
I just want to make sure I understand, so if there's curbing now on Slade Street where you're proposing...
Yes.
16 feet of curbing is going.
That's correct.
And along Wilcox Street, you said there's a large portion...
We will be replacing probably 30 feet of curb.
So you'll be replacing curb, that was my question.
On Wilcox, yes, and that all gets handled through Site Plan Review.
On Wilcox.
That's correct.
But the impact, if these are currently rented, those are more cars that will be needing those...
Well, I don't know what they're rented for. I don't know whether they're just for storage, or, yeah, I mean, it's a pretty, you know, it's a very old structure, but again, it sits so low. Actually, when you stand, when you stand behind the existing 3-family, you can touch the roof of the garage, that's how much of an elevation difference there is.
So that's going?
That's going, that garage would be going, yes.
Right. And those are the only, that's the only waivers you need?
That's correct. Now, I did see, we might as well discuss this before you read it in, I did get a copy of an engineering report by the city engineer, J.R. Frye. In his comments, he mentions that we should call out the proposed lot coverages for that we would need a variance for that. In the BL District, there is no minimum requirement, so we don't need to request lot coverage variances for either of the 2 lots. But both parcels would be subject to Site Plan Review, which is also what he brought forward, for the parking area on Parcel 1, and for the home parking and utilities on Parcel 2. And again, the requested relief is due to the topographic relief of the 2 parcels, and that the use of the garage is kind of dwindled. And in order to use that area, it would serve itself best as a new home built at a lower elevation, because once the garage is gone, there's really no use for that area being so low for the existing 3-family.
Are you going to do drainage calcs as part of the...
Yeah, they make us, yeah, through Site Plan Review, through Site Plan Review, we have to provide... No, I mean, the Site Plan Review Committee will review stormwater calcs and groundwater infiltration chambers that we normally propose to offset the increase in impervious area. So on Parcel 1, for instance, that new parking area will have to have some type of a drainage system to accommodate that new impervious area. Parcel 2, we're getting rid of the garage, so of course, we'll attempt to argue that we're reducing the impervious area, but it doesn't seem to work.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions? Carolyn, Dan, David? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Mr. Chairman, Director, I know you're not chairman, I'm chairman, you're Director. What, if any, comments should we have?
If you are thinking of granting it, I would like to request a specific condition requiring Site Plan Review for both lots. An applicant probably could argue, well, it's an existing 3-family, I don't want to do Site Plan Review for the parking lot. And that's, we want to make sure that Site Plan Review would be required for Lot 1 for the parking, and Site Plan Review would be required for Parcel 2 for the new structure and the parking. As always, you probably want to look at requiring that the garage be raised before any permits are issued. And I don't think there's an issue with the, well, they're demoing it, so it didn't really matter, it's nothing on you.
Can I insert just one thing, and this has happened before? When you write the decision, we say, raise the building prior to the issuance of any permits?
You need a permit.
We need a demolition permit, so say a building permit for the new structure.
Right, any building permit for a new structure.
Okay.
Building permit for new structure, really, that became an issue, no permit until you raise it.
There's a condition that says you can't raise it.
I'm just trying to think of who would raise that.
I don't think it's been anything recent, but I just, Will normally say building permit, and he didn't say building permit this time.
Let's avoid, I don't want you coming back because we...
I don't want to come back anymore than I have to.
He didn't tell me that I needed a demolition permit, so I can't do it, so it stays. Got a nonsensical result, we didn't leave our common sense at the door, good. Anything else, was that it?
That is it.
Okay, so those are the recommendations from the Director of Planning, we've heard the presentation. Motion to grant, motion to deny. Carolyn, motion to grant, Dan, with the conditions being... Site plan... Garage has to be raised before building permit issued. Site plan review for both lots 1 and 2. And the variance would be for the rear deck, is that what it was?
Right, well, the rear of the structure and the deck would be no closer than 4 feet to a property line, and the square footage reduction.
Square footage reduction, 1,050.
Correct.
So, Dan, that's your motion with those conditions?
Yes.
Do I have a second on the motion? Carolyn, seconds, any discussion on the motion, all those in favor? Okay, so that petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 4, Ryan Brooks, 37 Day Street Lot G2055, variance request to subdivide existing 11,700 plus or minus square foot parcel, leaving existing 3-family dwelling on Lot 1 with 5,660 square feet, while proposing a single-family home with garage on Lot 2 with 6,040 plus or minus square feet, waiving lot area requirements in an R4 district.
Good evening, again for the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Ryan Brooks, who owns the real estate at 37 Day Street. As the Chairman stated, again, almost identically to the last petition, we have an existing 3-family dwelling located to the north portion of this parcel along Day Street. Again, this is a corner lot with additional frontage of 90 feet along Osborne Street. The lot...
Is Lot 2's frontage going to be on Osborne Street? I sound like God rest his soul, Gene Alves, where's the frontage going to be?
Well, again, the minimum frontage requirement is 75 feet. So the technical frontage, yes, the front door will be facing Osborne Street, the garage would be a side mode of the garage, yes.
As I was looking at, I just wanted to make sure that the 90 feet take care of the 75.
The house will be facing it, yes, okay, the front entrance, you're right though, thanks, Gene. So if you look at the plan, you'll see, again, the existing 3-family, a very large existing parking area that wraps around the existing 3-family, a garage, a very large concrete patio, and in-ground pool, and then an adjacent lawn area. So the petition before you is to subdivide the parcel, constructing a new single-family home on Lot 2, again, with 90 feet of frontage on Osborne, and 6,040 square feet for that home, again, meeting the requirements. The proposed structure, again, would meet all of the building requirements with regards to setback for the district. On Lot 2, and I was looking at this, again, this wasn't a plan that I prepared, Lot 2 will, however, and this was in the engineering department's comment as well, would require, once completed, a reduction in lot coverage. So in lieu of the 30 feet required, we would be proposing 33. However... Sorry, required 30, we're asking for 33. But when you look at the lot itself, and I can submit this to you, if you take what new Lot 2 is, there is currently more impervious surface with the pool and the patio than what we're building. So there's actually going to be a net reduction of 7% in lot coverage. So if we didn't build anything, there would be an exceedance of lot coverage. But because that's a separate structure, we didn't want to say that there was a grandfathering of lot coverage, and the lot hadn't been created yet.
Let me ask about the existing concrete patio.
Yes.
Is that going to be removed?
Entirely removed.
Because I have visions of that property line that appears very nice on the plan, but with the 2 neighbors and the, if it's there, that's just going to be a recipe for...
Right, no.
The existing concrete patio and pool will be removed?
All of that will be removed from Lot Number 2. Lot, well, Lot Number 1, there, yes, there is a small portion of patio, you see, that will extend over that lot line.
Through Parking Space 5 and the existing...
That's what I was going to explain to you, so Parking Lot Number, Space Number 5 would require a new paved surface to be there, but the concrete portion of it would all come out. The existing garage would stay, the existing pavement behind the building, the existing pavement where you see Spaces 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, that would all remain. That curb cut stays the same coming off of Day Street. All of the concrete patio is coming out.
My only concern was the existing concrete, just drawing a line on paper, we see it.
And then you go out there.
When you go to the site and you see it, it's just a recipe for problems.
And that's part of the reason why, you can see, we pulled back the space for 5, so that there would be an additional gap, so all of the concrete patio, all the concrete patio would be...
Dan, can you address the hardship, it seems like it's a more personal hardship than relating to...
Well, what we've got is, we have a property owner that has this 3-family dwelling that's pushed way off to the side of the property, and a very large lot, far exceeding the area requirements. The 3-family structure currently is a non-conforming use, this is an R4 district. So we already have a non-conformity with regards to that structure, although it not being the size of the lot, the structure itself brings us into the non-conformity of what we have, what we're starting with. We will have a reduction in overall impervious surface over the entire site, creating a better drainage situation. The overall development would reduce the overall impervious surface for the entire parcel by 6%. So that would be a great advantage, plus, we would be adding roof drain drywells for the new structure as well, far increasing the ability to infiltrate some stormwater. But getting back to the uniqueness of this parcel, we have a corner lot with excessive frontage on both streets, excessive area, and the home is pushed off to one side, and the owner doesn't have the need or the ability to take care of this entire parcel anymore, and the pool and the patio is just going unused. So this is going to give them the ability to clean up the area as a whole, build a new single-family home, and create a drastic drainage improvement for the area.
That's going to be, my, looking at it, this is going to be... There's one single family across the street on Osborne Street, but other than that, they're all multi-families?
Yeah, they're all multi-families on lots actually as small or smaller than being proposed. I mean, we normally don't throw that out as an argument, but just so that you know, I mean, it would definitely be... Yeah. Yeah, if this was a situation where the house sat closer to the middle of it, then yeah, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it.
Carolyn, is that explanation sufficient, or do you want more detail?
No, I understood what you said.
I know you didn't, but I mean...
May not be sufficient, but she understood.
I understood, well, I got that, so I want to make sure that if there's something else...
I have nothing else to add.
Any other board members have anything? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Director of Planning, do you have any comments that we should think about?
Yeah, I think that if you are looking at granting this, I would recommend, like Lot 1, you're creating, you know, we talk about an existing non-conforming structure, but I would recommend that that's a new lot that you would, I would think that you would want to be specific on the variances of the existing non-conforming, such as the side setback, the front setback, the lot coverage requirements to, you know...
Lot coverage I have, but I do not know what the exact building setbacks are. If you wanted to table it to get that information, I wouldn't be opposed.
I think that, because you...
I know we did it on the last one, the one we did on Chicago Street, you wanted the exact, the actual setbacks.
I think that if you are inclined to grant the variance, that you should, since... The existing non, but it's, yes, it's changing.
We're not changing the non-conformity of the structure.
You're not changing the non-conforming structure, you're changing the lot.
No, no, yes, I don't disagree with that, but I'm saying the 3-family itself together, the north, but the other...
At a minimum, I would recommend, do you know what the lot percentage coverage would be when you remove all the concrete and you add the minimum asphalt for Parking Space 5?
So this is what I was getting, so on Lot 1, if we look at the entire lot, because I asked for this this morning, the entire lot overall, this is what we entered. Lot 1, if you just look at Lot 1, which is the 56... Right now, the existing impervious area is this, when we remove the concrete, we drop down, so...
But you're still counting this?
We're counting this.
As asphalt, man.
As asphalt, this coming up, that's the only place that we would have that reduction, so that's...
So we go from 86 to 81.
But still, at the end of the day, that requires a variance. As well as the exact same scenario.
So Lot 1, so Lot 1 would be...
So we'll make this part of your...
Lot 1 would be 81%, impervious area. Lot 2, I think clearly, well, I would recommend to reiterate to require, I don't really see a need for a Site Plan Review for Lot 1, because you're literally just going to add a little bit of asphalt where the parking is, concrete. Lot 2, Site Plan Review, list the specific variance, it appears it's 33%. And require that the pool and concrete patio, and I wrote all of the concrete patio, that all of the concrete on Lot 1 and 2 be removed prior to issuance of a building permit for the new structure.
That's fine.
Okay. And that's all you need for Lot 2, the variance there is the lot coverage for 33%?
That's correct, yeah.
Lot 1 is 81%?
And Lot 1 is the area requirement?
That's correct.
So area, lot area and...
Lot coverage, yeah. And actually, on Lot 2, actually, when this gets built, because I'm looking at this now, they have actually a 24-foot wide driveway shown, and that's not going to happen.
You can't grant, this board can't grant that.
No, no, I understand, but I'm saying the lot coverage is based upon that.
You need to teach people in your office that it's 16 feet in fault river.
So we may get that down.
We'll get that down.
But let's hold the 33 for now.
Okay. Okay, so those are your comments?
That is.
Members of the board, any questions to the Director of Planning? Motion to grant, motion to deny? Motion to grant with the conditions. Site Plan Review for Lot Number 2. The lot area variance for Lot Number 1. Lot coverage for Lot Number 2, 33%.
Lot coverage for Lot Number 1.
Lot coverage for Lot Number 1, 81%. Condition that all concrete and existing patio be removed from both Lots 1 and 2?
And the pool. And the pool.
And the pool, well, the pool, existing pool and the existing concrete patio covering Lots 1 and 2 should be removed before the issuance of the building. So that's your motion with those conditions?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? 1, 2, 3? Carolyn, no? Carolyn, no, so Chairman says yes, so it's 4 to 1, the petition is granted.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
That's it? Agenda item number, this is, we talked about that. Okay, Agenda Item Number 5. Rachian Parkett, care of Mark Levin Esquire, 95 Concord Street, Lot K2129. This is a variance request to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing 2-family on Lot 1, while demolishing the existing garage and constructing a new single-family dwelling on Lot 2, waiving requirements in the G District, lot size 10,500 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Madam Clerk. My name is Attorney Mark Levin, 138 Rock Street, 4th of Massachusetts. I'm here representing the Rochini family and Ms. Parkett, also a member of the family. They're all owners of this parcel of land. Presently, we have an existing 2-family dwelling with a garage, a small garage toward the rear of the property as it faces Concord Street, which is what its street address is. The house sits all the way to the side of the property, the east side of the property, and we're in a general area which requires 5,000 square feet per lot. In looking at this, my clients having 2 frontages for what they could try to do would have been able to get a 50-foot frontage if not for the shape of the house on Concord Street, because they could have gone in having frontage on Stone Street and got 50 feet for one lot, 50 for the other, but unfortunately, the rear part of the house juts out about 6 and 1/2 feet. So therefore, they redesigned it to have frontage, both houses still on Concord Street, leaving a 2-foot deficit for frontage for the new house lot that we are tending to create. The lot size we try to keep... The lot size, we try to keep as close as possible to the minimum requirements for the new single-family home, it's off by 200 feet. The existing single-family home would have had 6,500, so it's off by 800 feet using this design. Trying to carve it up to make it work any better or to bring the sideline requirements for the two-family house further away just sort of made the lot look a little more cockeyed than it was worth. So we recommended that we just go split it down there, get as close as we can for the new single-family home, and leave the remaining house, the two-family where it exists. We have a garage that would come down, the recommendation of the engineers is to have a four-car placement for the existing two-family home, and that's not a problem. That problem will be, and they questioned the lot coverage, and I'm not sophisticated enough to do what the engineer does, but that would exceed the 25% that is required by adding more pavement onto that lot, the existing lot, to get the other two cars. But I had asked for waivers of all of the dimensional requirements, including the lot coverage. The new house, if proposed, the, there isn't actually a 12-foot opening on the street already on Concord Street that faces into the house, they just put where the houses are. The engineering department questioned whether, what the size, or they think the engineer just threw a box just to show two cars there, obviously would have to be the 16 feet, probably what the existing drive on the other side of Stone Street is, my guess. We believe that the area of this property is such that the character of the same, those houses directly to the rear of Concord Street facing Lafayette Street are three and two-family homes, all in about 5,000 square foot lots. We do have single-family homes in the neighborhood and across the street on Stone Street, there's a large multifamily home on a lot that's smaller than this. We believe that area is such that we can provide off-street parking. We will go to the site plan review to make sure that any impervious material that is now created does so that it would be regenerated onto the property itself. I believe that the house size is modest enough that, well, it's actually, one of the family members that are in there is married and now wants to live in their own single-family home instead of sharing the house with their family.
But.
Here nor there.
Hodgepodge.
Yeah, that's not, but here nor there, that's really why the, drove them to this point. So I have, they meet the setback and sideline requirements in the new lot, I would be asking obviously for a waiver of the sideline requirement for the one lot on.
Stone Street.
Yeah. Well, as on Concord Street, where it meets the lots, two and a half feet, where it'd have to be 10 feet, the other lot meets it, all the other lot dimensions, or the existing building meets where it is, and the new building would meet all the existing sidelines and setback requirements, other than I'm short two feet for the new building, and I am, I need a sideline waiver, and I need some area waiver, and obviously for the existing house, by increasing the parking from two to four, I'll meet over the 25% lot coverage without a doubt, but I had asked for that waiver, and that would be, the only thing would be for is to add the extra parking, nothing else, because that's what the engineering department requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, any questions?
The hardship seems personal, so can you?
Well, no, the hardship is where I said in the beginning, the house is set back on the east, all the way over the corner. It's completely over the corner, it creates its own lot, the rest of the lot is just not used at all. The garage will be gone, and then you have a character of that neighborhood, which is on much smaller lots, multifamily, they're three and twos, that are on 5,000 square feet of land, where we're going to have at least 57 for the two and 4,800 for the single. So we meet that character of that neighborhood, it's just traditional neighborhood, and this happened to be a double lot that they acquired, but if you look at where the structure of the house is, it's so far over, and we would have been able to accommodate a lot and have the 5,000 for the, for a new lot, if we could go on Stone Street, but unfortunately, the design of that house and where it sits on the property, it cuts out onto the area that I would need a six and a half foot setback instead of just asking for two-foot frontage waiver.
Tell me again, if you did it on Stone Street, to give you 50-foot frontage, so you make a conforming lot?
You'd have to take down part of the structure. See the back part here? There's a back part here, and that extends, so it's six and a half feet.
Yeah, so my point being is that when you talk about you could make a lot that conforms with a 50-foot frontage, it doesn't work because.
No, no, because of the structure, that's why we had to go this way.
The structure, the structure on this particular lot is, I think, the basis for maybe your argument of hardship.
Yes, that is correct. And that's an unusual lot for that neighborhood, the character is such.
I didn't do.
And this is only a 5,000 square foot.
I didn't go back and do the title on this when I did this. Was this lot that we're looking at, 48 by 100, was that the 70?
I didn't do the title. I didn't do the title myself. But if you look at the back lots behind it, they're all 5,000 square foot lots, and they all have twos and threes.
My question is frontage, what was, if it was, if they were all 48, or whether or not we're creating the waiver, and I realize two feet, you know, it's as wide as I am, maybe.
Right, I understand that.
But in my recollection, when I drove by there, you've got the entrance, the current driveway off Concord Street that goes back to the back garages. So it wasn't one of the typical arguments that they had, it was just a side yard, it was just what it, this was all being used as part of the ongoing lodger lot. Okay.
Well, I understand they weren't using really the garage, so.
No, but you got it, you got the garage, and you got the driveway coming in, and it was all versus, it was just set on the side, and I acquired it because I was a good businessman and said, I'm going to have it for my kids so they can come up with it.
Sure. But I believe that the placement of that house and the character of the neighborhood is such that that gives us the hardship for this particular district.
You reduced, you reduced the building on for both from 28 to 48 to 28 to 34 now.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
I, let me see with the board, any questions to the board? Carolyn, you've got the hardship issue. Dan? David?
I just.
Go ahead.
On the two-family house, that's four cars that we should have.
That's what the engineering is recommending.
But where are they going?
They would go, they would come in and be just extended out. I talked to the owner, and they said they would just spay that out so they could park there.
So you've got, so what do you, so 16-foot drive then.
And they'd just come out.
Then open it up, so that's where the four is going to be?
Yeah.
But that way, they'd get more covered.
Well, that's what I said, it would, because he's recommending it go, so it obviously is going to go up in coverage.
If they're going.
But I asked for a waiver.
If they're going to cover it with asphalt, or they're going to have.
Put on the grass.
Put on the grass, yeah.
But again, I had asked for a waiver of the lot coverage dimension too.
I know, you said every year, because you didn't do the calculation.
I can't do it, I'm not that good.
But that's, that's the, that's the intent, I guess, to have it 16-foot wide, have it come in and park, whether they park, whether they park and spray it out, or whether they park, what is it?
Behind each other.
Or they stack.
Tandem.
Seven, it's called.
Tandem.
But accommodation is made for four on that one. What else? That was it. Okay? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Ladies, so this is what I'm going to do, I'm going to start in the back, and I'm going to work my way down and across, I thought you were on yourself, okay, does that all work? So we'll start in the back and work across, was there any?
They can add this.
They're all pointing to you, Madam, yeah, so I need name and address. You're the lead-off lady.
Well, I oppose the variance because of several reasons.
Madam, I need your name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is Michelle Zager, and I live at 55 Concord Street.
Very good.
I am part of the condominium trust, there's a condominium near, that butts the property on 55 Concord Street.
Yes.
So in that condominium, there's six tenants, there's three on one side, three on the other. We all have vehicles. Keep in mind also, there's a Talbot School in behind there, which creates a lot, a lot of congestion in the morning, with traffic, with parking, with people going up and down the street. It's very, very cumbersome when you're trying to get out, especially to go to work in the morning. It actually should be a one-way street in my mind, because one of these days, somebody's really going to get into an accident, because there's cars coming this way down Concord Street, there's cars coming the opposite way, and I know there's like a little, I don't want to say cul-de-sac, that's not the word, but a little rotary where they can come both ways from Eastern Avenue. So, you know, we have a lot of elderly left that live on, in the complex. About a week ago, we had ambulances coming, they couldn't even come to the street, they couldn't even park next to the street because of all the congestion, they had to park in the parking lot where we have access to parking. So I'm definitely opposed to having this building, for many reasons, for traffic and for, I don't know if the neighborhood feels the same way, but it's just, it's just too congested.
We're going to find out, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, next row, anyone there? Ladies?
I've got the same, I'm sorry, I'm Terry Messier, I live at the Concord condominium as well.
Okay.
And the big issue is parking. I mean, even within our unit, we don't, we have one car that can't fit in the yard, so they're already on the street, so if you stop having more cars parked on the, there's no place to put them. We can't even park in front of the house to go bring our groceries in the house. Takes me two days sometimes to bring my groceries up the stairs, because I have to go all the way around the building in order to bring the stuff upstairs. The other big issue, like Michelle said, is we got the school, they come in and people park in our driveway, right in the middle of the driveway, won't let us in our own yard. That's ridiculous. I mean, I got out one day, I said to the guy, hey, listen, this is private property, you don't belong in here, we've got signs that say no trespassing, they still park. He told me, he gave me a few explicit, you know, explicit comments, right? Said he was picking up his kid. I said, well, I'm in the middle of the street, nobody can get up and down, because there's people on both sides of the street, and I'm stuck in the middle because he won't let me in my yard. The other problem we've had recently, and you had the same problem, is we've tried driving up the street, there's a house up the street, at the top of the street, there's like, what is it, eight? It's two tenement houses that have a driveway in the middle of it. They have been using that to do repairs on cars. There is a trailer parked on the street that doesn't move. That trailer's got motorcycles in it, it's got stuff for fixing cars. We drove up the street one day, they've got a, they've got a flatbed going right across the street, I beeped the horn because I can't get out, I can't get to County Street. He told me to go back the car up, I had to back the car up between two cars, both sides of the street, and back all the way down the street. That shouldn't happen, and I don't know how to fix that.
You call the police, you call the building inspector, you call the mayor.
The police, the building inspector, and the mayor?
Back, okay. That's who you're going to call? Building inspector, the police department, or any of your elected officials to figure out what's happening with, it sounds like the school is a problem, and it sounds like whatever activities taking place in the neighborhoods, you need to get somebody's attention. It's beyond the scope of this board. This board is limited to the land use issue that Attorney Levin is asking about, but the issues in the neighborhood.
Well, we just brought it up because you said, you know, because of the parking.
No, no, I want to, we need to hear this, we need to hear, I don't live there, I drive by, I know where it is.
Yep.
But we need to hear from the neighbors who live there, what your opposition is, or what things that we're not sufficiently versed with, because we're not there 24/7.
No.
I drove by, looked at, I saw it, school's out, so I didn't see any action over there, but during the course of school, I can appreciate what you're saying.
Uh-huh. And I mean, we shouldn't be stopped from going out of our street, to Concord, to County Street.
That is correct, ma'am.
But they throw us fingers and tell us to go back the car up.
Maybe they need to go back to school and learn some, some behavior. Attorney Levin?
Well, two things, one, unheard thing about that other activity going on, you'll find a letter from me to the building inspector requesting that they investigate that and make sure, and I've received a call, and they said next month they'll have some time to inspect it, because we were doing it for a client, too.
Did you hear that?
No, I did not.
So, Mr. Attorney Levin has a client who is complaining. He has written, he says he's written a letter to the building inspector, building inspector is going to look into and investigate the issue with whatever that business activity is that's happened.
Okay, thank you.
So that's one thing.
So that's one thing.
The other thing is, again, there are two existing driveways now on this property, as you've seen, one and the other, and again, no off-street parking, we're proposed, I mean, off-street parking, no on-street, we're going to have two cars for the single, and as the engineering's requested, we're going to expand that to four. So we're not going to take away any more area from the street, because it's already gone. So all we're doing is putting more, actually, we're adding two more cars off-site, even though I'm told that my people only use two cars, but we'll have four cars off-site anyway for the two-family.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to be heard on this petition? Bill?
If you decide to look at, that you feel that they've demonstrated enough of a hardship, we would request that the specific waivers be listed. In this case, I don't think that the lot coverage percentage could be a specific waiver for the two-family, since we don't know the configuration of the four spaces, but you could say a waiver to lot coverage to allow for four parking, off-street parking spaces. We would request that site plan review be required for both lots, site plan review for the existing two-family for the parking lot, and that site plan review be explicitly required for the new lot, and that removal of the garage needs to be done through a demo permit prior to issuance of a future building permit.
If I may, anyone add about the two-foot frontage waiver and the, for the.
Yeah, on lot number, the.
And then whatever, the, and this is based off the June 20th plan.
Yes, yes, okay.
So.
Two-foot waiver off.
And the square footage for the two lots.
And the building envelope 28 by 34.
What's the front requirement here?
50.
50 feet.
Oh, two-foot that, and then obviously the side.
The side yard waiver on the other parcel for the two-family.
So it would have been nice if they would have listed it as parcel one and parcel two.
Sorry.
We're going to have site plan, we're going to have site plans submitted, 101, to a lot of these people coming up.
I agree.
Might just send them back at the counter.
Side yard is 10, so it's.
Yeah, all the dimensions on the other lot would meet, it's just the two feet and the square footage is short.
In the future, I would recommend that you advise your clients, and before you submit, to put a little chart on the plans, they're very helpful, what zoning is and what relief you're seeking.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize he didn't, see, I only got this portion of the prop, so I don't know the other half, he didn't put it?
7.5 would be the waiver of that, easterly, okay.
Those are my only comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so those are the Director of Planning's comments, members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant, motion to deny, have they met the burden for a variance?
Take a motion to grant, go for body.
David Saber, motion to grant with the conditions being lot coverage waiver for four cars on the two-family, site plan review for both lots, removal of the existing garage prior to the issuance of a building permit, two feet waiver on Concord Street for the new lot, building envelope 28 by 34, and the westerly boundary waiver of seven and a half feet on the existing two-family dwelling. Is that your motion, David?
Yes, sir.
Two off-street parking for the proposed new house, and maximum four off-street parking for the existing two-family. Okay, yes?
Yes.
So that's David's motion, do we have a second? Okay. No second?
No second.
No second, okay. So we don't have that motion going forward, do I have a motion to deny?
No denial.
Move denial, Jim Corrigan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marasette, any discussion on the motion? None? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. David, yes, no? No second. Okay. So, we don't have that motion going forward. Do I have a motion to deny?
No denial.
Move denial. Jim Corkins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Carolyn Morrisette, any discussion on the motion? None? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. David, yes, no?
I'm in favor.
This is, oh, wait. Cat, the motion from Jim Corkins, your motion didn't go forward.
Okay.
So, now we have a motion to deny. Jim Corkins made the motion, Carolyn Morrisette seconded. So, now we're voting. There was no further discussion on the motion. What are we gonna do? Deny the motion, deny the variance? I have Corkins, one. Carolyn, two. Dan, two here, three. Dave Saber, no. David Assad, yes. So, it's four to one. The petition is denied. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Levin. That's mine. This is it? Okay, you ready? Agenda item number. Bob Barabee, here he is. Agenda item number six, Barbara J. Angelini, 320 Indian Town Road, Lot W 2443. Special permit request to remove the existing mobile home and construct a single-family home with minimum frontage and lot area on an existing non-conforming lot in the R80 district, lot size 60,047, plus or minus square feet.
Okay.
Okay, Bob. Well, sir?
Bob Barabee, pro-line engineering, representing the owner, Barbara Angelini, and the applicant, Chris Thomas, who is a relative of Barbara's and a potential buyer of the property. The parcel in question was platted in 1968, along with the two abutting properties, one on each side. At the time, the lots were required to have 60,000 square feet of frontage, of area, and 200 feet of frontage. So, that's what the lot has now. But under today's standards, it's required, as you can see in the zoning requirement section, it's an R8, 80 zone, so it needs 80,000 square feet, which we don't have, 300 feet of frontage. And then the setbacks are also listed there. On the plan, I show in the dash line what the setbacks would be based on current standards. This parcel years ago contained a dwelling, but the dwelling was owned, it was an older dwelling, and it was demolished because of its age, because it couldn't be repaired. So, there was a mobile home placed on the property. You can see the rectangle on my plan. That's the existing mobile home that sits on the property. It's right on the property line to the abutting property to the east. The applicant, as well as the owner, would like to remove the mobile home and construct a single-family dwelling on the lot. So, I'm showing the approximate size of the dwelling. If this is granted by the board, the dwelling will meet coverage. It will meet all of the current setback requirements.
It meets everything, everything of the area except for frontage and square footage.
That's correct.
And other than that, you can put it within the building envelope, and you're the-
Yep, and the town, the city engineer did make a recommendation for site plan review, which we have no issue with, so we would conform to that also.
Thank you. Members of the board, any questions on this particular proposal? The waiver that's required is frontage and area. Okay, no one? Anyone? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? You're in favor. Okay, Madam, I'll start with you, and you can speak.
Charlotte Thomas, 300 Indian Town Road. The land was originally all farmland. My father divided it up and gave each of my sisters and myself a lot. And I just feel that it was right at the time when he, when he did it. And now, because we bound the watershed property, they increased the square footage to 80,000 square feet. And I think that that's unfair, that this lot will just sit there. We'll never be able to build a house, and I want, I want them to be able to build something there.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Young lady next to you?
I'm Christopher Thomas.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're going across this way. No, sir? Sir, now it's your turn.
I'm Christopher Thomas. I'm on the other side. You know, it's my mom, that's my son. You know, I mean, I built my house there, you know, with the requirements back then. And, you know, like my mom says, it's, you know, they changed it, so now if we don't get the variance, you know, we're not gonna be able to do anything. We're gonna just sit there, you know. So, obviously, I want my son to be near me, you know what I mean? So, you know, I'm just hoping that-
Don't do it.
Well, I talk to the guys, so.
Yeah, it's like everybody loves Raymond.
Don't do it. But if that's what you even want to do, talk to you. Okay.
No, so I mean, it's all family, you know what I mean? It's like-
I do. I know exactly what you're saying.
Well, that's what we say.
We hope it stays, though.
Be prepared.
Madam, did you have any comment?
No, sir.
No, okay.
I was talking about.
All right. Sir? No?
No.
Okay. All right, so that's what we have before, is we heard from everyone. Director of planning, do you have any comment that we should?
I don't have any issues with this. I mean, it was a, it was a existing conforming lot. The, due to common ownership, the, when the zoning changed, it obviously became a non-conforming lot. As you can see, the dwelling looks like a small speck within the actual building envelope that they could do. I would, even though, we would request that site plan review be a condition, and that removal of the mobile home may be done prior to issuance of a building permit for the structure. And is this well inseptic up there?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have no city water, no nothing.
Not yet, okay. All right, so that-
That's it.
Okay. So, this is director of planning's comments. So, we have a motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant with those.
Motion to grant with those conditions from Carolyn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupire, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. David, is that your answer?
Yes, sir.
So, five to zero. Petition's granted.
I guess make a pack of lunch and let's go out there.
So, that petition is granted. Mr. Barabee, you're all set with that?
Thank you.
We have to have it registered? Somebody didn't have it registered?
Mr. Barabee will make sure that you do everything you're supposed to do.
There will be a, there's an appeal period of the decision. Once it's, the appeal period's up, you have one year to act on it, and you have one, you know, you need to record the variance, and you have one year to pull a building permit to vest that variance.
Okay. Mr. Barabee will tell you this.
All right, I hear that. The first, first one, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, Joe in Amandio Arujo, 25 Vernon Street, Lot B 2138. A variance request to build a single-family dwelling with garage, with garage and deck, waiving requirements in the commercial mill district, lot size 9,999, plus or minus square feet. Gentlemen, please, tell me who you are and what you want to do.
So, I am Jose Arujo. Live at 15 Elizabeth Drive in Rochester. We purchased this lot back in October of last year. Had attorney John Brum filing an application for variance because the lot is an industrial air zone, and we wanted to put a residential home. It did get approved back in November, but when we went to pull a permit, the wrong plans were submitted for the house. We actually wanted to put a bigger house on, on that law, and so when, so it was denied. The building inspector did not issue us a permit because the footprint, there is, there is on the law-
Didn't have a garage on it.
It didn't have a, it didn't have a garage on it also.
And the dwelling is somewhat, the footprint of the dwelling is slightly different, and it had no garage.
Right. So, it was actually the wrong plan that-
Submitted.
They submitted, so.
Okay. So, now, let me get back to that decision.
Just wanted to have the trailer on it, right?
Yeah, that's, although this is coming back. Trailer was gone when we went and looked at it. That's correct.
Yeah, the Google, Google map showed the trailer on it, but it's not there.
Yeah, we removed the trailer. Yeah, we, we actually sold it. We actually sold it. We had an opportunity to sell it, so.
It's, it's, yeah, I don't know.
It's something.
Commercial mill district.
Commercial mill, 10,000 square feet, 100 feet of frontage. She got that, doesn't have that. Front side setback, 10 feet. Nope.
Yeah, so he meets that, so he meets that. It's just, it's just the, okay. So, he meets the side yard, meets the front yard, meets the rear yard, dimensional requirements. So, it's just the footprint that wasn't in conformity with what we had before.
Yeah.
Okay. So, but I also think because it's in the commercial mill district, we need to have that finding if we're thinking of doing it again, 48, Section 9, third paragraph, that if we're thinking about doing it, that the public good would be served, and after a finding by the special permit granting authority, that such non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by such a residential use, and that permitted uses in such a zone are not noxious to multifamily use.
Is that for a variance?
This is, that's for the special permit, right? Is this, is that what's before, or is it a-
It's a variance.
It's a variance. Oh, so forget about 48. Yeah, forget about that. So, just go back to the variance. Shape, topography, soil condition, and the commercial home district, that it's in, is what we have to consider.
Would it, would it been easy for us to change the zoning instead of-
No, no, no.
No? Good luck.
Like from industrial-
You're fine. What it would be easy to do is to show a building envelope and don't show a specific building. That's what would, is, that would be the best thing to do.
So, can you live with what this plan says?
Other than you can't have a-
No, you want us to come back?
I-
Oh, we'd like to see you again. We'd like. Yes, we can, we can live with this, with what we have there. Yes. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, Joe?
You're showing a 24-foot driveway. The requirement in the city is 16 feet. So, you, at the curb, you can go 16, and then you can widen out.
So, you're 24-foot wide.
There's actually an existing one there now, and-
You have an existing driveway that you're going to be removing, and you're going to be proposing a new driveway. The driveway curb cut by code, by ordinance, can only be 16 feet.
Okay.
Unless you wish to go in front of city council.
No, we do not want to do that.
So, I'm just pointing out to you, this board does not grant a waiver, cannot grant a waiver, even though it's shown on your plans. For the record, I want to state that the board cannot, they know they can't, but for the minutes, the board cannot grant a waiver to the, to the 16-foot driveway requirement. And so, when you apply for your site plan review, which the plan is clearly under here, they're going to have to revise that.
I would've thought that filing would've known all these codes, you know.
They don't, we do a lot of work here. They don't-
We just asked them to put this together, you know, and we figured they knew what they were doing, and, you know, they do know what they're doing, except that.
There's no curb. My recommendation, if you so choose to approve this, would be require site plan review. I've given them the heads up that the driveway needs to be 16 feet, and that to also give them a heads up that the existing driveway, I would request that that be conditioned to be removed and restored per engineering department specifications. And we don't have to talk about the existing structure because it doesn't-
Okay, doesn't exist. Okay, so that's the director of planning's input for the board to consider. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'm making a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, condition, site plan review, driveway 16 feet, compliance with the ordinance, and the existing driveway to be removed, and to be replaced with-
Restored per engineering department specifications.
Restored per engineering specifications.
There's no curbing there.
There is not, no.
There's no curbing, so it's-
No, could, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, just, so that's, those are the conditions of your motion.
Yeah, they're gonna be pushing the curbing.
There's no curbing there to be replaced.
So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be replaced, not replaced.
To be removed per engineering department specifications.
So, let engineering decide how they want that done, but that's going. Okay?
Yes.
So, what was your question before?
Forget about it, it's fine.
Do I have a second on that motion? Second, David Saber. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Three, four, five. So, is unanimous. The petition's granted. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
My name, you're on TV? First time in my life.
Number eight, Tecumseh Street Realty Trust, 257 Tecumseh Street, Lot I 2326. Variance request to construct a single-family dwelling, waiving requirements in the A2 district in place of previous three-family dwelling, lot size 3,700. Ms. Nunez, identify yourself for the record, please.
Lisa Nunez, on behalf of Tecumseh Street Realty Trust, we want to put a single-family 26 by 48, which I believe the plan was sent over to you.
26 by 48 is what we have in front of us.
Okay. Yep.
You want to tell us a little history? You want to tell us about the fire on April 6th, 2010?
2010.
Three-family house burned down, little girl died.
I know, which is horrible.
It's been sitting there since 2010. Now, it's looking to get developed with a single-family dwelling in this area.
Correct.
And that's it. So, the waivers that you need is in this particular district, because it's the, it's the A2 district, you need 10,000 for the first. We all have a pre-existing lot of 3,700. We need some waivers of side yard, frontage, area requirements to let you build.
Correct.
Okay.
But none of them are listed.
And none of them, none of them all listed, but-
I didn't file the application.
There's not a single variance, and there's no measure, very little measurements either.
Oh, well, this is from the architect. Do you have the same?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yep, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
How do we know what the setbacks are?
Well, we know that the, let me see, 18-foot, 18-foot setback from Tecumseh Street to the northwest corner of the building. We don't have what location of three family. Yeah, so what they've done with the dotted line is showing where the outline of the three family was, and they're putting the new single-family 48 by 26 within the same footprint.
Not really.
It's outside, it's inside.
It's 26. If it was centered, what's 37 minus 26 is 11? And if you did it centered, you know, I would recommend that you can, that this be continued, and a plan with specific waivers and dimensions be on there, because I, I'm scared if we make stuff up, that, you know, that's my only concern.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no setbacks at all on the plan.
Can't be computed.
I can't figure it out.
I mean, it's 26-foot wide building, and the lot's 37 feet wide.
Correct.
If you did it dead center, then it's five and a half feet on each side. By the way, you're showing, you're showing, you're showing an 18-foot driveway. It can only have 16 feet.
I know.
So-
What do you see?
Yeah, no, it's 18 feet back.
No, he's doing two 9-foot driveway spaces. That's 18 feet.
Well, that's what that's supposed to be, nine?
Nine by 18, and then another driveway is nine by 18. Nine and nine is 18.
Oh, so that's a driveway, that's what that, oh, I see.
Two car, I'm sorry.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it.
Two cars.
I see it, two cars, yeah.
Two cars each, typical parking. So, that, you know.
Yep.
We don't show the curb line would be helpful, and a listing of the variance.
Okay, so let's-
I'm old queen to withdraw.
No, not withdraw, no, continue it, or continue it to the next meeting to have the plan submitted with all the dimensional requirements and waivers shown on the plan.
Okay.
What is the deadline for that?
What's our next meeting?
Today is the deadline for that, which it can continue to that, but when are we expecting the plans for, for review prior to a meeting?
Can you get it done, you get it done in a week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, shall have the new plan submitted within one week from today?
Yes, by next Thursday.
By next Thursday. Is next Friday better?
Thursday's fine. Nope.
So, next Thursday, new plan, showing us everything, and it'll be on the July meeting.
What's the, what's the date for the July meeting? Do you guys know yet, or no?
I'm sure Brittany knows.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, let's have the board vote on that. That was Corkins' motion to bring it then. Do we have a second on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. So, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Thank you.
So, you have your paper back.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, Julie.
Okay, let's see. The next item on the agenda, review of the zoning board of appeals pursuit, procedures for public hearing legal notices. for public hearing legal notices. I think we all got them, but...
I'm going to remove, I'll review with you.
Do you need a copy?
If you need a copy, good.
It's all for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, you requested that I look at, I wanted to talk about requiring the public hearing legal notice to be a direct reimbursable responsibility of the applicant. And in the, you also asked me to survey the various towns, so I surveyed Swansea, New Bedford, Taunton, Fairhaven, Westport, and Somerset. A vast majority of them require, as you noted in my, I noted in my memo, all but one required that that direct cost be by the applicant. How they did it varied greatly. I'm recommending that we go with a model very similar to what Swansea does. Is the application comes in, that the board, that the planning board, we will write the ad because we'll make sure it's done correctly. We write the ad, we will get a, we submit that to the paper. They can, within, I think, very short time, they let us know how much the ad is. Then we just take the number of applications and divide it. Require them to provide us with a check, and that is written to the city. It goes into what we call a fifty-three G deposit account. It doesn't go to the general fund. It's a deposit account. Once the bill comes in, then the bill is paid. So it's a direct reimbursable. We, I think it's the, as I stated in my memo, it's the best and cleanest way to do it. We don't have to take in a deposit, refund money. It makes it, it makes it very easy and very transparent.
So it's just, for example, we have a thousand-dollar publication bill, we have ten items on the agenda. A thousand gets divided by ten.
Correct.
And every applicant pays that share.
Correct.
We don't get into how many lines, if...
No, we do not, because a vast majority of the ad is the preamble and the bottom portion, and...
I just wanted to be clear for the, for the record, that that is strictly, it's strictly a numerical denominator, numerator.
Correct.
Mathematical number, and that's what it is.
And as you noticed...
And they have to pay when?
They have to pay, they'll be sent on an email or notified, however they provide their notification. And that check has to be in and deposited prior to the meeting. If they have not paid, then we, as a policy, would recommend that that not be heard and continued until the applicant, until that fee is paid. So that's the...
And you, your staff will be responsible for monitoring this.
Yes, we will, our office will.
Not the treasurer, not the collector?
No. For, that it's paid?
No, that the money, it's been paid, it comes in, it's been paid.
Yes.
So I don't have another, another level of city government dealing with it.
The payment comes in to our department, just like an application fee, but it's just a deposit. The payment comes in, it then, we take those. Brittany will, does the, whatever the checks go, and then that gets sent.
Whatever she does. I do whatever I do.
Brittany does whatever she does, and it's, and it's deposited...
So at the end of each publication, so at the end of each publication, the balance in your account is zero?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So it's just a flow through? Here you go, a thousand dollars is what the, the cost was, thousand dollars gets paid out?
It's a direct expense.
Zero.
It's a direct expense.
That's it.
It's a direct expense.
Mr. Chairman, I think that of the various proposals submitted, it's the cleanest and the easiest to implement, and I move the adoption of that policy.
So now, one of the things that I did is, this board has rules and regulations which govern how you're going to operate. So I have actually included it. There's a text-edited version. When I looked at the rules and regulations, because part of what I've put here at the meeting is to review your rules and regulations, there were a handful of very, what I consider minor issues. On page one, where it talks about picking up applications from the code enforcement officer, we don't do that, so I have it as planning department. Where on a butters notification, we wanted to make it clear that the abutters list must be certified by the assessor's office. So that was on page two. Also on page two is regarding the exact language for the, the legal notice cost. We noticed that on the tax certification, we, a lot of things, that this form may be obtained from the, from the collector's office, so we decided to add that. The assistance regarding the, on page three, some of the places talked about phone, had phone numbers, so we added the phone numbers of the planning department and assessor's office. And there was, what is the other one? Oh, there, one's grammatical, there's a comma on page three.
Effect versus effect.
Oh, and then...
You liked that one.
I did.
I, and then later on, it also, on page six, it was noted, I noted that due to the charter, nowhere could I find the public comment, so I'm just reinforcing the policy of public comment that, and I've basically taken this from the charter, which we're already doing, but I decided to add it into your rules and regulations. I know you adopted it. Also on page six, there's reference to getting applications at the building department. It also is the legal advertisement. We've also had some people argue with us on how the fee is calculated on the lot and being created excluding the lot.
Existing lot, yes.
So we are saying each new lot being created. So that's to clarify that issue. That is reiterated also on page seven. And is it the effect and effect, one was an E and an A, that was on page nine. So I took the liberty of taking some minor edits. The major edits were the, was the policy on, would be the public comment policy, including that in your rules, and also the legal notice deposit. And then the rest were kind of more housecleaning issues.
I have a question for the legal notice.
Yes.
Okay. So you're saying that they have to, you're going to divide out, and people have to supply with a check.
Yeah.
The event that they don't, we're not going to hear. At what point in time, like, where's the cutoff on that? Because if the legal notice goes out and they don't pay for it, then they've already made the notifications.
We can continue to the next meeting without another advertisement.
But if they don't pay, we drive.
No, you don't have to advertise again for a continued max.
Yes.
You don't have to.
No.
So you would just, in the meeting, move it?
Yeah.
Chairman, while we're reviewing that, there was one thing, as I looked at, a maximum of twenty-five would be held in, heard in any one evening. Is that reasonable?
There used to be...
Oh, let me think, I think I'm the only one who's still here. The first night, the first, I was appointed, and we had the first meeting, and we were here till like one o'clock in the morning, dealing with, I think, twenty-five items. So if we want to limit that number, we can certainly change it from twenty-five to, what's the most we've had? I think about ten or fifteen, maybe.
My second meeting, we were here till ten o'clock, and that was a sixteen-item agenda.
I'd say fifteen is probably...
So if you want to limit it to fifteen on any agenda, and that's just the regular schedule. If we have more, we can certainly either waive it, or we can have a special meeting, but...
I just looked at that, and it just seemed excessive.
No, no, I mean, that first meeting, but I, as chairman, that first night, I let people talk greater than three minutes, and we just kept on going.
So is that something that you would propose to change?
Do you want to change it?
I, I...
No, no.
I was paying the board.
It's open for discussion.
Well, I'm also going, I'm also going to ask, whatever we adopt, whether or not corporation counsel should review it before they become final, but just have it run by them.
Okay.
Karen, what's your opinion about the agenda?
I'd lower it to twelve. Get fifteen.
Okay.
So if fifteen is acceptable, I would go lower.
Well, Brit, do you, do you remember on average, what the average is on the agenda items?
In the summer, we do hit the teens.
Okay. So fifteen, can we all agree with fifteen instead of twenty-five? So, okay.
Although next meeting, we only have that.
No, it's all right, we just want to...
It's basic case.
Because every, because this way, everybody knows the agenda's closed out, I'll... Okay? All right?
And I have run this by Ms. Sahadi on how we will, using the fifty-three G and a half account and all of the finance mechanisms.
I'll leave that to you, that's...
I've already done that.
That's in your real house.
So I move that we approve the changes to the, what are we calling this?
The publication fee.
Well, well...
No, changes to your rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations of the zoning, including the changes in the publication fee.
As noted in here?
Yes.
Plus the changing of twenty-five to fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on our motion? All those in favor? Okay, so that's approved with those changes, very good. Do we have any citizen's input? Anybody back there want to speak? Nope, no one signed up. We have minutes of...
Approval of the May sixteenth meeting.
Two thousand and nineteen minutes.
Two thousand and ten, waive the reading of them.
Okay, for the May sixteenth.
Sec, yes.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, cut, so the April, just for the record, April eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen minutes have not been completed yet, is that correct? Is there anything else that we need to bring up before we adjourn? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Zoning Board of Appeal for the City of Fall River, June twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, is hereby closed. Thank you. Thank you, David.